Good evening. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order this evening. Stephanie, would you like to take attendance?
Yep.
Please.
Anthony Amato.
Yep.
Alan Brown. Not here. John Bonido. He was here. I can count him right. Gregory Kava. Michelle Gora.
Here.
James Hirschfield. Stephanie Kolnick here. Jennifer Pody. Lisa Rousch. Michael Sinatra. Julie Stewart. Peter Tagley is here. Great, we've got quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item. Public comment on agenda items. Does anybody wishes to address the board? Sir, please state your name. And your town.
My name is George Strive. I'm from Washington, Connecticut. I just have two questions for the fine folks. Number one is, what would... What happens if you don't meet the out-of-town student quota to cover the overhead of the school? What is your plan to address that?
And your second question?
And the second question is, we're continually having a reduced number of students coming through the lower grades, and that's not going to change. So that's going to aggravate the situation even more. We're faced with not enough students to cover the cost of the school. What are you going to do when that time happens, which could happen in the next year or two? What are you going to... What's your plan?
Typically, we... The board doesn't engage in a dialogue when we hear from the public. But I could say that with respect to the AgSTEM program, we know we have some work to do to attract students to get into the school, to cover our operating and financial costs. And we do have a plan. And it includes the hiring of a director for the AgSTEM program, which will be in next year's budget. And that person will begin recruiting for the first class starting the day that they're hired.
Now, would you say that the out-of-town students, the towns that they're coming from, are they going to be receptive to losing their students to our school?
Yes. It was a prerequisite from the state before they approved the program that all six of the sending towns had to sign agreements with us that they would send us children.
That's all I wanted to know.
You're welcome.
Thank you all you people for the good work you're doing. And hopefully, this thing is going to be an asset for the town. It's a tough deal, but God bless you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good night. All right, moving to our next item, consent agenda. Are there any comments? Hearing none. Consent agenda passes. Reports, I'll begin with a report from the chair. The superintendent's search process kicked off last week, as many of you or all of you know. Dr. Arati was selected to lead the process. He recently completed a search for Avon and comes to the region highly recommended. Dr. Arati will be conducting focus groups throughout the district. In addition to the focus groups, the survey will be posted on the Region 12 website for all those who wish to provide input. The board certainly encourages all of our residents, parents, faculty, staff to participate. Applications are due the 23rd of March, and interviews are planned to begin the first week in April. So more to come as this process continues to unfold. And with that, Teresa, nice to see you.
For the superintendent's report... Thank you. So for the superintendent's report, I just have one thing to share. And that is that the Grade 11 students will be on a field trip to the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York. And that was approved by Dr. Cosentino. So it's just me sharing that information with each of you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Teresa? None? Okay, we'll move to the committee reports. Greg, I'm going to... Why don't you hold off on, even though the building's listed first, and we'll save that for the AgSTEM update, please? Next is at advance, Michelle? Nothing. Michael, education.
We just had our... We just had our meeting. And one of the topics that we talked about was an upcoming Cabe conference on education, high school start time. And so I believe Teresa might be attending that conference. We might have another board member, myself, going, but we'll see.
I have not heard, by the way.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. We've got a few things going on, so... But it's a really interesting topic. And I'd encourage, if anybody else does have time, since it is a Cabe conference, you're all invited to any Cabe event. We are members of Cabe, so that's a hot topic coming up on... Teresa, what was the date again? Do you have that? February 13th. Yes, I'm not too far away. And a number of speakers from around the state talking a little bit about what that means. Wilton High used to be unusual in the state with our start time of an 8:20 start time. But Greenwich High and, most recently, Ridgefield High just moved to a later start time for their high school. And that's the 15th, if anybody's interested. If you go to the Cabe website, the meeting's in Weathersfield. And we got a report and an update from Teresa on VHS and some of the VHS offerings. And it's really impressive what some of our students are taking advantage of in terms of VHS. I can pass around the list if anybody's curious to see. What's striking to me is the growth in VHS from when we started back in 2013, 2014, to today in terms of the numbers of students that are taking VHS classes. And the numbers of different classes that they're taking continue to grow. And so I find that really encouraging, that we're giving our students those kinds of choices, too, in the curriculum, so...
Thank you. Greg, facilities. Microphone, Greg. Thank you.
The facilities committee will be meeting in the second meeting of this month. We have been looking at the... We've been addressing every meeting the issue of capital needs. Have been discussing that so that we can come up with a more modern capital needs plan and an idea of what we're going to need in order to maintain the building. I think I talked about that at the last meeting. So we're still in that process. We've had an issue, as you know, with the pool heater that we're working on. We had also had some concerns expressed by individuals that we're still looking into over the access to the building, particularly the pool during times when there is a snow delay or weather delay or a weather cancellation. And we are trying to see how much... Whether we can accommodate people with a delay in the availability of the pool on days when we have a delay rather than a cancellation. But cancellations are going to be very difficult, if not impossible. People coming in and out is not compatible with our workers keeping the place plowed and up to speed. So we're working on that. We met with a bunch of people who came in who had expressed concerns. We had a good discussion with them. And eventually, we will come to the board with some recommendation of how to deal with the situation. But we are very attuned to the fact that we have people who are very supportive of our school, people who want to be here at our school. We want to make that pool as a community resource. We want to make it available. But we have to do it in a way that's safe for our staff and safe for our students and safe for the people using the pool, from the general public. It's got to be everyone. A lot of people don't realize that we don't even allow the teachers to come in early. If it's two-hour delay, they've got to wait two hours to come in because we can't have people parking in our lots or coming in and out, and we've got snowplows. You've got a windy snow, very hard to see what's going on. So it's all about safety, and that's where we are. So I think that is mostly what the facilities committee is up to right now. We're looking at budget issues as well and where we ought to be on our budget for the year, so...
Thank you.
Another report after our next meeting.
Michael, you have a question?
Greg, I was just wondering if Don had given you an update on the pool heater situation?
I don't have an up-to-the-minute update on the pool heater situation. I know that they're working on it. I know that it's out or not functioning properly. And we're trying to deal with that, but it's still not resolved.
Michelle, back to you.
Finance.
All right, we met right before this meeting. And we had a very productive and full agenda. We went over the financials, as we always do. We currently have 3% of the budget remaining, which is about standard for this point in time of the year. And everything seemed to be mostly in order... Well, everything is in order. We had a few questions about why some categories had seen some increases in expenditures. One of the areas that we saw an increase was the building repair and upkeep. And that was due to the freezing down at Burnham and... Pipe freezing and the flooding up here at the high school. We then went over the capital reserve account, as well as the elementary capital reserve account, looking at the balances there for future... For budgeting purposes for next year. And we looked at some recommendations of some items that will be coming up in the next budget that might be eligible or that are eligible for the 1% capital fund and for the Capital Elementary Fund to sort of ease the operating budget. So we were getting ready to look at the next year's budget. Let's see, what else? The checks for the surplus from last year went to the towns. So those checks have been distributed. We talked briefly about some staffing changes for the upcoming budget, which we'll be talking about more in the future. We had no numbers, just some preliminary discussion. Just so everyone knows, February 6th and 8th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will be having budget workshops, hearing from all the administrators to go over their initial budget requests. So it's the beginning of the budget process. For us, we have another meeting scheduled for February 12th, which we may or may not need, depending on how quickly the presentations go. The only other thing I would say is that I'm continuing to go to the Board of Finance meetings in the towns. I've had the pleasure of sitting through the audit for the town of Bridgewater and the town of Washington. That was super exciting. And we had quite an interested group of citizens at the town of Washington meeting having questions about AgSTEM. And we will continue to explain to the board as we go through the budgeting process exactly how financing for the project works through the operating budget and when the money comes from the state and when we borrow and how that all works. So as soon as we go to bid and we have a timetable in front of us, we'll be able to explain how that is going to work. So anyone have questions? I think... Did you all receive... Do you all receive the full finance packet? Does that go? That doesn't... Okay, just the agenda goes. Okay, okay. Well, if anyone is ever interested in looking or receiving the full finances, please let us know because we receive it every month, and you certainly could, too.
I just have a quick question. So the surplus checks, is that just what we don't spend that goes back to the towns? Or does that also include tuition money that comes in? Everything? So that would be tuition...
Bob, please. Thank you.
What goes back to the towns is the excess revenue that they have an account for and the unexpendited appropriation. And it's the balance of the region fund balance. It's distributed based on enrollment.
So that includes Sherman tuition, staff tuition, and non-resident tuition?
And any interest income and anything we might have gotten in from the state, any miscellaneous revenue.
And those go once a year?
Yep, at the end of the conclusion of the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just follow up on that, Bob? How much was sent back to each town? Can you tell us?
I have it right here.
Either one, that's fine.
So Bridgewater, $8,208.09. Roxbury, $13,519.70. And Washington, $20,494.89. That's based on our... The population. It's a percentage of the total, which was $42,222.68.
Thank you.
And Michelle, could you, since you're reading numbers, could you share with the board just the balance on the capital fund and the elementary one?
Sure.
The elementary fund?
So the capital fund currently has an adjusted balance of $744,247.11. That is including all of the activity for this year since the audit. There are a few items still that Don is probably working on. So that's what's currently there. Doesn't mean that's exactly what will be available for next year's budget. But it's pretty close because a fair amount of work has been done this year so far. And for the Elementary Capital Reserve Fund, there's $100,979.29 available. That is including the activity so far this year. And there are very few projects outstanding.
Thank you.
You said the elementary fund, is that the lease fund?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Sure.
Alan's not here, but I don't believe there's any update on his long-range planning committee negotiations. Greg, where do you go? All right, so while Greg is making his way back, back to you, Michelle, policies?
Ah, all right. We continue to meet. We have several policies on our agenda for tonight. I also just wanted to briefly mention that, while it's not the policy committee, the out-of-district tuition policy, ad hoc committee met and made some recommendations to our lawyer to reword. And then that will be coming back to the full board for discussion. That was the recommendation. So it's a policy, but it's not coming through the traditional committee.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Greg, back to you on negotiations.
I have nothing to report right now.
Very good, Greg. Thanks. All right, moving into new business and updates. Bob, can you walk us through an update of the financials for AgSTEM?
There's been no change since the December 31st report. I didn't receive any additional bills to be paid. There was a discussion to... Of a proposal of some... Trying to think the number right now. I think there were some bills that needed to be presented, but they weren't acted upon by the committee at this point. And it was for, I think it was $100,000 or $87,000 now.
It's been discussed, but we've never received an invoice.
Right.
I'm waiting first for an amendment to the contract, and that's one that I'll talk about in my presentation.
Yeah.
We have no pending amounts.
Nothing has changed since that point in time. So that's the piece that's pending. And Greg has, I think, that number, otherwise I'll dig it out. See if I have it here.
Well, Greg, if you're going to cover it, you might as well just...
Well, I need to find out what I did with it now because I thought I had it in front, and it's not.
Okay. While they're looking for that, are there any other questions for Bob regarding... John?
Yes, I have one remaining not authorized. Bidding, $35,000. Construction administration, $329,000. Is that something that the building committee will authorize? Or is that something that the full board has to authorize?
It was... It's part of the contract that was approved with KBNA. But it just hadn't been through the board as authorized at this point. But I think you turn that over to the building committee at this point to engage the rest of the contract. The contract's in place, and it was done in steps. Now the whole thing is over with the building committee. So they will, in fact, when we get to that level, we'll be into the bidding and construction phase.
Greg, you ready?
Yeah.
Greg. Floor is yours.
All right, the building committee has, at its last meeting, went over status of project with our architects and construction manager. We do not have any new schedules for you. So the construction schedule remains as it's last presented to you. If and when we get a new one, I will have it sent to all the board members. But it's still moving in that direction. At the present point, we are trying to square up our contract with some amendments that have to be made to it. These are for items we've discussed. There's an amendment to cover T2 services. Work that Castle Booze engaged them in. That total is $65,780. And that agreement has been signed. And Bob, I just gave it back to Bob tonight. So it's... We have that one resolved. Amendment number two to the contract involves septic and traffic engineering services for Martinez Couch Associates. That's a total of $77,000, of which $57,000 is involved in septic and $19,008 in a traffic study. We've previously discussed the traffic study. The traffic study, we had authorized them to go forward with just the data gathering part of that, which was $5,000. There's another $14,800. And that gets you to the $19,800. And that study is... Should be starting shortly. They should be finishing that shortly. On the septic work, we had the project broken down into three phases. And this was sort of part of the reason why this took so long is we wanted to understand what was in it and what, if anything, we could leave on the side of the road. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to leave any of it on the side of the road. There is... Of that study, $14,300 was in Phase 1, which was data gathering, percolation, and testing. That work has been done. Faced... And that was to determine where we could locate a reserve area for the septic system that we have currently and where we could locate septic galleries to service the pool backwater wash, which cannot be discharged to the ground as it's been done for 40 years. It needs to be properly into a septic system. And we don't want to put it into our main septic system. So we're creating a small area to cover that. And then we need... We also wanted to use a separate area to cover the animal building. Originally, it was deemed to be quite a distance from the septic system and could involve the installation of pumps to get the effluent there. But in addition, putting extra... Adding extra square footage into our septic system could drag us into a different regulatory regime. And that would cost us money to serve no purpose because the system we have... When you really think about it, septic systems are designed not to serve a certain amount of square footage. They're designed to serve a certain number of people. If you look at your home septic system, you're going to find that it's size... The galleries and the tank are sized to the number of bedrooms. And that's because it's deemed that each bedroom has two people. If you have a five-bedroom house, that's 10 people. They have to have enough to cover 10 people. Well, in a school, they're looking at square footage as a proxy for a number of students. It's not an exact match. It doesn't make any... Has any... No applicability to us. You're sitting in a room that does not have one student that is regularly housed in a classroom in this room. And look at the size of it. It is almost as large as all the classrooms that surround it. You've got a mall out there that's bigger than this. You know, you have an enormous gymnasium, an enormous pool, and more locker rooms than we can possibly fill. This building has a lot of wasted space. But nonetheless, in order to avoid extra regulation... Extra regulatory regime that will serve no purpose because we have a septic system that's very underutilized, is in good condition, has been properly maintained, we felt it was appropriate to do that. So the bottom line is, is that Phase... Is Phase 3. And in that, $22,550 is going to go for the reserve area, designing the reserve area, $6,600 to design the pool backwash, and $8,800 to design the proposed system for the equine animal garage facility, which has the inelegant acronym EGAF. Anyway. Finally, there's Phase 2, which is to do an analysis of the existing water usage and a preliminary design and obtaining a determination from the Connecticut Department of Public Health that we can be under them as opposed to the DEEP. And that work has been done. And we are going to be under the Department of Health. Our water usage falls below the threshold that causes DEEP jurisdiction. So we're up to speed on that. So that's Amendment Number 2. That amendment had to be revised to add a couple of pieces of information to it. It should be back in our hands shortly, and then we should be able to sign that. But we've resolved that issue. Then there are the additional charges, the additional anticipated charges that Castle Booze originally brought to our attention with a letter of October 31, which originally called for $102,474 in additional charges. Those charges were schematic design at $44,000, $45,000. This is what had to be done to do additional work, to revise the schematic design as a result of the input of our consultants, T2, who looked at both new directions and new regulation... Or new approach... The way the approach the state has to teaching AgSTEM. There were some changes. There were some new directions. They incorporated those. They looked at our program. They evaluated it. They decided that in order to do the things we needed to do, we needed more wall space, additional things, required some changes to the design. So that adds to the cost, the fixed cost of the contract for schematic design. Design development is an addition of $25,000. This is because they had proceeded to design development. And we raised some questions as to why, but we... Those have been answered. And so that's additional design development work to incorporate those T2 changes. Finally, there was some architect support of the T2 people. And there was some landscape architect support on survey, traffic, and septic issues. We resolved this with an agreement by Castle Booze to reduce the architect support and the landscape architect support by half. And in addition, there was another issue that we had to deal with, which is that our contract was executed back in January of... Well, January of '16. And as a result, it had a 36-month shelf life. And we needed to extend that shelf life because the contract would be expiring prior to the current delivery date of the project, based on the delays from the state. And they have agreed to extend that delivery date out. I believe it's going to be extended out to May of 2020. We expect to have the project signed off by the state. That's not finished. It'll be finished earlier. But we expect by the... By sometime in late January, early February, it should be completely... Probably by February, it should be completely signed off and everything done. And so we wanted this to run for some period of time beyond that, to have a safety margin in case there was a delay in the project. And that has been agreed to. And I'm waiting for an agreement to take those into consideration. And the total of those services... Eighty-three... Eighty-six, three, three, seven. I'm sorry. For some reason, I couldn't find that on here. But that is the... That is what Bob was talking about. We do not have an amendment to the contracts signed yet. We, we do not have an amendment to the contracts signed yet, we're waiting for it to come in. And once that has been signed, we should be able to have all, have all that resolved and in there. At our meeting, we had asked Bob to give us an understanding of where these extra fees would be covered in, you know, in terms of how we would, with how, where'd they fit into the budget for the project. The budget for the project has about a million three in, in contingencies for extra costs along the way. In addition, we have had savings from two items Bob brought to our attention in there. The commissioning agent is just about twenty-nine thousand less than we expected, we budgeted to spend. And the telephone system that we're going to be installing, because of the type of system we had budgeted for, we no longer use. We use a VOIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol telephone system. And the cost of VOIP is five thousand dollars. The cost of the other system was sixty-eight thousand dollars. Sixty-eight or sixty-three, Bob?
Sixty-eight, five, twenty-two.
Sixty-eight, five, twenty-two. So as you can see, there have been substantial savings and this is the way contingencies work. Some things cost less than you expect, some things cost more. We are keeping an eye on it, we are trying to track and make sure, that's why I asked Bob to make that presentation. We are trying to track and make sure that we keep expenditures within the realm of what the budget for the project is. Because what ends up happening at the end of it, you either have to spend more money than you wanted or you need to start cutting what you're building. And so our goal is to complete the project a hundred percent on budget. And that's what we're still trying to do, that's what we still hope to do. Right now, as I've told you in past meetings, the science labs, we think may be costing a little more than we originally designed. AGSTEM was costing less, now we've added some of that back with some changes. These things are going to go up and down until ONG bids, the, the project is bid and ONG gives us a price as construction manager at risk. And then at that point, we should be pretty close to what the final will be. But you know what, it's like anything else. If you ever tried a construction project on your house, by the time you're done, something pops out no one expected, something pops out not covered by all of your best estimates. But we believe we've got a really good idea. We did as much diligence as we could have done, I think, to make sure we knew where, what was in the ground and what our issues were. And so that's, that's where we are. So currently, we're waiting for those, that paperwork to come back from, from Castle Booze. There were some other things included within the, in, in the items here that is a good faith matter. They have gone forward and completed and they're preparing to, to deal with all the permitting issues that they have to deal with. And, and once those are, and, and they're continuing to work on schematic and design. I think they're finishing up schematic and design development and then they'll be moving into construction documents and they're continuing to work on that. So that goes forward. One other item I wanted to mention, and I'm sorry to speak so long, but another item is the, the temporary facilities here that we need. It's my understanding currently that the way we're planning to do this is we are, you know, we had an issue because we hadn't really estimated any significant cost for temporary space. And then it came to our attention that we needed to consider what we're going to do about chemistry because you need a fume hood, you need water and gas and whatnot. So what we have decided to, where I think it's headed now, and it's still being worked on, where I think it's headed now is to keep the existing chemistry lab in operation throughout the course of construction and to work around it. And that would eliminate the need to have a temporary chemistry lab with a, with a range, with, with a hood. Because the fume hood is the expensive item. And so we believe that we can cover, that we can cover the, the temporary relocation without a significant, you know, without an enormous significant cost. We're still working on the final numbers, but, but, but dealing with the chemistry situation has brought the cost way, way down. The other thing we have to do is we have to move, in order to complete work in the far north end of the building, we have to move the kiln out. And rather than putting that in a temporary location and then removing it to a different location later, we're working out the, getting that into the art wing of the schools on a permanent basis so we can resolve that problem.
Not move it twice.
And not move it twice. The other thing we're looking at is we are asking, and I, I don't want anyone to misconstrue or misunderstand this. Because Facilities is working on a capital plan and trying to figure out what needs to be done, Mr. O'Leary is developing several what are called alternatives or opt alts. And the idea is, is for work that we need to do on the capital plan in the short term, we want to get estimates for seeing how much it would cost to have that work done while the site is fully mobilized for construction. Because if that can shave a significant percent off our costs of doing it, then the board, this would not be under the building committee. This would be, this would be under the board, Facilities Committee and then the board. But if we have opportunities to save money because we've got the site fully mobilized, then we want to at least have that estimate, that alternative presented to the board to see if we can save some money on the capital plan going forward. So these are the kind of things that we're looking at. Building committee is sort of semi-looking at that along with the Facilities Committee, just because it's, it doesn't cost us anything to ask. And so wouldn't we rather know? So that's pretty much what we've been up to lately. And we haven't, to my knowledge, other than finalizing these things, we haven't written any checks since we last talked to you, but we will be shortly.
So that analysis that Don's looking at is going to be for, for discussion in this budget cycle coming up, I assume?
Yeah, we're looking at this budget cycle as to, as to his recommendation for, for capital projects that we need to do. I mean, if I might take off my building committee hat and put my facilities hat back on, I had suggested to him that because we had this capital budget and these needs, we should, we should be looking at this now. We should not be delaying and putting this stuff off for some future date. Because all that does is it creates another large reservoir of money that has to be spent. Instead of spending it as you go and allowing, as the chairman has, has done a great job of doing, working with the town finance committees to try to say, what are we doing, where are our capital needs? Can they help, can they plan on their end for what we're going to be asking them for in, as far as increases in either bonding or taxes as a result of that? So we're trying to do this in an intelligent manner so we, we make it less burdensome and less onerous going forward. Thank you. Questions? You good, John? For the building? Yeah. Yes. Okay.
I'm still wondering about the amended changes being approved by DAS. Is that something that is still in, in the cards or have they looked at the changes? Or when are the changes going to be submitted and, and what has to happen after that?
Well, the next set of plans that goes to DAS are the design development plans and we're in the process of scheduling a meeting for that. And then we'll, we'll take them through those, those plans and, and get whatever comments they care to make.
What would be the, the plan of attack if they do not authorize the additional changes?
Well, it'd be so unlikely that they wouldn't since it's no more money from state funds that the changes are necessitated by program changes in part from the state and in part to allow us to do what we had to do under the plan. And the other thing is some of the, some of the, you know, there's some, we, we keep talking about increased square footage. It's less square footage than we last showed them plans for. It's more square footage than our checklist indicated we had hoped to get to. We didn't get there, we were a little bit short of where we wanted to be. I don't think it's going to be a, I mean, I don't know, John, but I don't think it's going to be a great controversy. We're not asking for any more money. And this stuff is necessary in part for student safety, to have safety margins, to have the rooms large enough to contain the numbers of students that are in them and to work the equipment that we have to put in there. So, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, we'll have a plan, I suppose. If they don't like these changes, we're going to have to redesign. So that's, that's what our plan is, we'll have to redesign if for whatever reason they don't approve them. But I don't think it would be in the interests of the program, the state or the students for them not to approve them because they're, they're relatively, I mean, the amount of square footage difference is relatively minor. And it's less than the amount that was originally approved by DAS. So in the reduced plan, it's less than the reduced plan approved. And, and so I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's likely to be a big problem. But we'll have to look at redesign issues if, if there's an issue. I don't know what else to do.
And secondly, and this is coming from members of the public who for some reason can't attend building committee meetings or get exactly what they're looking for out of the minutes of the building committee meeting. And there's been a suggestion that the building committee meetings be recorded.
Well, I'll take that up with the building committee at, at our next meeting or the meeting after that, one of the next meetings. See what their pleasure is.
Anything else?
I just want to follow up on what John said. The building committee meetings are open to the public, aren't they?
They are open to the public, they are noticed and their minutes are public.
Thank you.
So just a question on the AGSTEM staffing part. So Teresa shared with us that the position has been posted, but we've been referring to it as an AGSTEM director. And the posting is actually, it's an agri-science teacher. And I understand they are going to have a dual role, but there's not much in the description that talks about directing the program. And I just want to make sure I've got that right. And maybe we shouldn't say we're going to have an AGSTEM director if in fact, we're going to have a teacher.
The only thing I can say is that since we, the, the role of the building committee is to execute a building project, construct a building and this is a personnel matter, I'm going to be happily punt that right over to
Go ahead, Teresa, yes, please.
I'm happy to respond to that. It's like an instructional leader position. So this person would be an expert in ag science. And we did put in the posting O nine-two administrative certification preferred, but we did not want to close the door to any teachers who have the experience that we're looking for just because they don't have an O nine-two. But it is a dual role, they do teach students as well. It's not exclusively directing.
I just, if you read the description, just reading it from someone who knows nothing about nothing, but it doesn't really tell me that I'm going to be leading, you know, I'm going to be directing anything. It talks a lot about teaching, which is fine and, but I don't know, I just wonder if we'll get somebody with the right kind of skills for what we really need, which I see this as a really dynamic, go-getter, creative, innovative, marketing guru to make this thing happen and get our numbers up.
Good point. If that's not the case, we will certainly repost and add more language that describes the candidate we're looking for.
Just having some experience in region fourteen and budgeting for it over there, it is, it falls under the teacher contract, but it carries a stipend with it in additional days in the year. And that's, they don't necessarily, it, it almost functions like a head teacher, like an instructional leader where they're a teacher in the program, but they're limited in the number of classes they would teach because most of their, not most of it, a good portion of it is done doing all the things that you just described. Going out to the, sending towns, meeting with parents, all those things that you're, you're familiar with. And that's how it's covered, but it was falling under a teacher contract.
Teresa, is, can the posting be changed midstream if we want to change it? So would you take a look at that? And if there's anything we can do, it's a great point. Make sure it's clear what our expectations are, we can then just go ahead and make the change. Thank you. It's good, thank you, John, good catch. We actually talked about that in the finance committee because we said director, Bob kept saying teacher, we said director and, and it was where sort of, I guess, what contract the person would fall under. But in terms of putting the posting out, the contract is somewhat irrelevant, right? In terms of what skills we're looking for. So, good point, good point. Greg, can I just ask you to just clarify? Last meeting we had, we talked at length about the building committee and the authority of the building committee and, and we got into the contractual arrangement we have with ONG. And I was just thinking back on that conversation and, and perhaps it's worth clarifying. Because when we talked about the price, the guaranteed price we're getting from ONG, that's a guaranteed maximum price, correct?
That's the idea, yeah, it's a guaranteed maximum price. But I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain if it's a guaranteed, no. I, I need to clarify that because I still am not satisfied that it's, I'm not sure if it's a guaranteed maximum or simply a guaranteed price. And that's what I have to, that's what I've got to review. Bob, you may shed some light.
It's a maximum price, once we get all these, all the costs together. It's a guaranteed maximum price that we would be obligated to them. Anything below that is our savings. So would only, so if, if in fact, when we're finished, we end up with less than what that ONG contract is, that all reverts back to region twelve, they don't keep it, in other words.
Right, and if there's, and to the extent that, that if I remember correctly, this contingency that we also talked about is factored into ONG's guaranteed maximum price. And to the extent that we don't
It's not utilized
That contingency falls right back to the
Correct.
To the district.
Right.
It's not kept by ONG as a bonus or anything like that, it comes right back to us.
They carry that in the contract for the unknown. And if it's not utilized, it comes back to us. If for some reason, the cost exceeds that, they own it.
And they own it, right.
That's right. So we're, we have a mac, we have, we would have a known outside cost at that point. Likelihood is we'll get something back because that total contingency, if they did their work properly, we won't need that whole thing.
Right, and it's also my understanding that regarding the contingency fund and how it's used, that, that is, I think, up to the building committee to decide if the contingency is going to be used for a particular item, not ONG's decision.
Right, I mean, all the, I mean, they have some latitude to keep the project moving.
Right.
But it's not, right, it's not the whole contingency.
Right, so they're not going to use the contingency
They have to report in all the time.
To fund their performance problems.
Correct.
As an example.
Exactly.
Right.
But they, whatever, but they do have latitude to use a portion of that just to keep the project moving in between the times they have to report back to us.
Right.
Yeah, I can't remember the amount on that.
It's small.
It's small. Eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was, it was a very small amount.
I can't remember the exact number though.
Right, but it's, it's for that very reason. You don't want to have to reassemble a whole committee
Right.
to make a determination that you have to make the whole four feet wider, for example, or crazy things.
Thank you. I, I just thought it was an important point to make sure that we're talking about that contract accurately. You know, so people, I don't want anybody running out or listening to a tape and saying, oh, they're going to give a fixed price and it's not really exactly a fixed price, but still, it's a good contract, in my opinion. So, thank you, Michelle. Policies, floor's yours.
All right, we have several policies on the agenda tonight. If you can open the electronic packet that was sent to you. First policy on the agenda is five-one-one-eight-point-one, students, homeless students. This is a second reading. In your packet were included two copies, one that had the yellow proposed changes and then the other did, did not have them in yellow to represent a clean copy. Just to briefly remind you, because we did adopt this policy, we just revised it in August of two thousand seventeen, but because of state law changing, we needed to add number seven, which states that the board will provide any homeless student who is not in the physical custody of a parent or guardian full access to his or her educational records, including medical records in the board's possession. That's the new language and the laws that require that are highlighted down below, the legal references. I also wanted to add just one housekeeping thing, this is my fault. It was a question that was asked of me earlier and I, I did not, I did not get back to Sue before the packet was distributed. But if you look on the policy, when CAPE sends us policies, they cross-reference other policies that might pertain, might have something to do with this policy. The two that are listed here are The two that are listed here are not policies that we have in our, in our policy handbook under those numbers. We cover some of these topics in different, in different, um, areas, but I would like to propose that those are just struck off. Usually we do that before we bring it to you, and, um, it just, it, we picked up the fact that it, we don't have them, but we just didn't get them crossed off. So I would like to, um, request that we remove those two. It says CF five one four three and CF five one four six. Um, we don't have those.
I'll move that the board approved, uh, policy five one one eight point one, homeless students with the strikeouts as suggested by Michelle as a second reading.
Microphone problems. All right, the motion's been, uh, seconded. Um, are there any further discussion? If none, all those that are in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Next, uh, policy, six one two one point one, Instruction, Equal Opportunity. Um, this is a routine update. Um, this was a policy that was adopted back in, um, nineteen ninety-nine and has not been addressed since then. You can see the language in yellow, um, updating, um, just, uh, the date and the fact that, um, we will continue to report, uh, make a report to the Commissioner of Education, um, Programs and Activities Undertaken to Reduce Racial, Ethnic, and Economic Isolation. And this is, um, happening and always has been. It's just an update to the policy.
Motion?
If we adopt the policy by, uh, policy six one two one point one for a second reading.
Michael, thank you. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, sorry. Same, same, um, I meant to mention this before. If you look down, uh, at the end of the policy, same housekeeping, um, there are two policies that are referenced that we've forgot to strike off. We don't have them. It's CF six one one four point seven, Safe Schools, and CF seven zero one zero, Goals and Objectives Construction. Um, they're the ones that are not highlighted. I think that was it. Oh, five one one seven point two, Inter-District Choice. The three policies that are not highlighted are ones that are, we do not have. And so I would like those to be struck. We, we would just remove them.
Make a friendly amendment? Greg, you okay with that?
Friendly amendment accepted.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All those abstain? The motion passes unanimously on six one two one dot one, Instruction and Equal Opportunity, less the strikeouts, uh, mentioned by the chair, policy chair. Next is a first reading, Michelle.
Yep, thank you. All right. Five, this is zero five two one, Non-Discrimination Equity Title Nine. We actually have seen this policy before, but it, we, it was kicked back, so it's coming back for first reading. And I have, um, hard copies of the first page with the colors. We're gonna leave, uh, the, we're gonna let the board decide which way they would like to see the language. So, this is the policy about not discriminating against people who use our building. And the yellow language, um, updates the policy to comply with, um, the updates in the law. I, and I, I did wanna point out, I don't know if we, we did this, if I did this last time. Um, it, it may seem a little confusing if you look at the yellow, for example, in the first paragraph, um, you'll see that sex is highlighted, and then right underneath it, it's crossed out, and then it's, appears again further on. Uh, what we're doing is just bringing our language and the list into alignment with CAE, um, so that it matches, so that future updates are easier to, to update and change as well. Um, the point that I wanted to, the, the part that I wanted to point out to you is the, what was handed out in green, it was the recommendation of the policy committee. The language, um, as proposed by CAE is what you received in your electronic packet. Um, as a policy committee, we had struck out Boy Scouts and had just said all designated youth groups, but as we were discussing this policy, um, with Vincent at, um, CAE, he pointed out that Boy Scouts actually has to be listed because they are in the law. We can't not, um, we, we have to mention them. So the committee had, had thought we could just put them in as an example. So either way, the language, either way will satisfy the law, we just have to decide which language we prefer. Are, are there any other?
Jim?
Well, I'm trying to follow what you're saying, Michelle.
Sorry.
The, the one that you handed out, that we have in front of us
Mm-huh.
Is the proposal that the last sentence of the first paragraph read, the district provides equal access to
Jim?
I'm sorry.
Is it the committee's, uh, recommendation that the last sentence of the first paragraph read, the district provides equal access to all Boy Scouts designated groups? That's what it says?
To all, and then in parentheses, EG, example, Boy Scouts, closed parentheses.
I see. Okay.
Design, so we really wanted it to say all designated, all youth groups, um, but we have to have Boy Scouts in as an example. But we can also take the CAE language, which says, provides equal access to the Boy Scouts and other designated youth groups.
Can I go next?
Well, it just seems to me like with a discrimination policy, you should just say, for example, as opposed to making it look like we're giving special treatment to the Boy Scouts.
That's what we thought. That's what we thought.
Michael?
I know, it's bizarre, isn't it?
Um, I'm not sure why, I don't know if this is a, a new typo or, or if we just didn't catch it, but
What?
If you look at the largest, um, section that's in yellow, at the very end, it ends with, uh, with whom the individual associates or status of veteran. That just doesn't make sense.
Oh, I think it's as a
Should be
Which is
Or status as a veteran.
Yeah, which is weird because that's what's in the electronic one, um, that was sent to, that I'm looking at, so that's strange. Yeah. So we'll make sure that gets put back in. I need it read.
Jim?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, as a first reading, the one, the zero five two one that's been handed out to us, amended to say, or status of, status of a veteran, and that the last sentence of the first paragraph read, the district provides equal access to all, paren, EG, Boy Scouts and paren, designated youth groups.
Second? Anyone? Thank you. Any further questions?
Yes.
Jim? Uh, excuse me, Greg?
I, I don't, I, I don't understand what they told you. We, we are required to name the Boy Scouts. Is there a reason for that? Not that I have anything against the Boy Scouts, but you know, when you name a specific organization, you know, if that organization were to not comply with this group at some date in the future, because organizations change how they approach issues, does that create a problem for us? I, I don't understand why would they're naming, they specifically name an organization in a statute? That doesn't make, that doesn't sound right.
Teresa, do you wanna jump in since you spoke with Vin?
Sure. I just wanted to point out, um, in the legal references, we have to because of the Boy Scouts of America Equal Access Act. So there's an actual law named Boy Scouts of America Equal Access Act. So it's listed under legal references. On your electronic version?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
I know, I haven't found it yet. Where is it?
The eighth line down, twenty USC seven nine zero five.
Oh, it's a federal statute.
Yes. And so that's why it's in there, and we had to honor that.
All right.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the, uh, policy zero five two one, Non-Discrimination Equity Title Nine, uh, as, as presented with amendments described? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion passes unanimously.
Can I just ask, does this, you have that, this everything, you've got it? Okay. Thank you.
Pretty good.
Thank you. All right. Last policy, five one four four point one, Use of Physical Force. Um, this policy was just recently approved in two thousand sixteen, so it may feel, um, somewhat, uh, familiar. The new language is in yellow, and, um, there, there are a few minor, uh, language changes in the first page, but then as you scroll down, you'll see some, some larger changes. What happened is, um, the state legislature heard from the districts that the training of all staff in the, um, risk, in, in restraint and use physical force was, was onerous. And so, um, they've added crisis intervention teams for each school that must be trained. And, and it, and they sort of outline who is allowed to be on these, uh, crisis intervention teams, and it's outlined as any teacher, administrator, school professional, or other school employee designated by the principal. So it, it loosens the training requirements a little bit, uh, so that not as many people in the building need to be trained. And then there are a few other, um, added language changes that you can see. Um, for example, under the use of physical force, school employees shall not use a life-threatening physical restraint on a student, and they added, under any circumstances. It's pretty, um, straightforward addition. Are there any questions?
Michelle, it, uh, it says that the board shall maintain a list of, uh, members of the crisis. Who, how, how do we, who or what, where, where
Not, well, the board, they, it, this is, happens a lot in policy because all of the policy is technically the board's policy, but you, you should read superintendent or administration whenever it says that. The central, whoever has been assigned
Central office to comply.
Right.
Okay. Great.
Yes.
Thank you. And they're really saying, under any circumstances?
Life-threatening force.
I, I have a question about that. Is there any reason the language couldn't say, the board shall cause a list of all members of the crisis innovation, innovation team for each school to be maintained, uh, rather than saying the board shall maintain? If we cause it, then we could, we should immediately follow this with a vote, uh, to require the superintendent to maintain this list. Uh, that's sort of the way things work. I think this is kinda loose language.
Sure. We, we could certainly do that because we, we, the board, are not maintaining it.
Right.
That, that we are instructing central, whomever is designated in central office to, to maintain this list. We're just saying that it has to happen.
All right.
And we're actually not even saying that it has to happen. It's really the state that's saying it has to happen, but
All right. I'll, I'll make an amendment to, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve this policy for first reading with an amendment that amends that line in the paragraph immediately above dis, dissemination of policy. And that that last line should read, the board shall cause the, uh, superintendent of schools to maintain a list of all the students of the crisis intervention team for each school.
The board shall cause the
Superintendent of schools to maintain, and then the rest of it's fine.
To maintain, okay. I have that language down. And that, and that makes perfect sense to me.
Okay, so you made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I thought I heard something come. All right, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? The motion passes. Debbie, did you get the amendment? Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion?
Well, before you do that, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. As I was looking back after, um, giving my report, I went, I went in back and looked back at the minutes that were on the consent agenda, and I think there's a couple of things in there that are, got mistaken words. I'd like to move to take that off the consent agenda so I could give you those fixes. For example, I saw going through there that it said some, the construction manager would maintain, uh, at-risk insurance in the event, uh, some hurricane knocked the school down, whatever. Actually, I think what I said was builder's risk insurance. Uh, that's a term of art that I would've used. And so there's a couple little things like that, and I'd just like to give it one last look-see, 'cause that's a pretty detailed set of minutes. And I wanna make sure that things line up, especially the part about the authority given to the, the, the building committee in conjunction with the last, uh, with the last motion that was made. I just wanna make sure that that's properly tied in, so we're not out there functioning without the right authority. And I'm sorry, I looked at it, and I, I read it through once, uh, night before last, and it looked okay to me. And then I, as I was looking back at it for a second, I, I said, wait a minute, I'd like to look at that again. I hope you don't mind.
So it was, uh, since it was passed, is that a motion to rescind the consent agenda and have it come back at the next, the next meeting?
Yeah, a motion to take it off the consent agenda and come back at the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, question?
I just wanted to say, I was, wanted to mention this before, but the consent agenda went so quickly, but, um, to just
That's for questions.
I, I know, but it moved right on. I just, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to thank, I don't know, was this, if it was Debbie or Sue, I don't know who did the, the minutes, but they're very detailed and very thorough and
They were.
Very laborious, and so thank you very much to Sue DeDos. Yeah, so thank you.
That's
Because it was
That's good of you to point that out.
It was a very nice recap of a very detailed discussion.
Yes. Okay, so there's a motion on the, on the floor to, uh, rescind the consent agenda? Or, or not? That's not what you said, Greg?
Yeah, actually, my motion was to take the minutes of the last meeting off of the consent agenda so that they could be re-looked at and bring them back at our next meeting.
Okay.
If, I don't know if rescind is the right word, but if, I'm not claiming pride of authorship here, I just want, I just want those not to be presumed to be adopted.
All right, so all those in favor of taking the minutes off the consent agenda and having them come back at the next, uh, scheduled meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion passes unanimously. May I have a, a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. That's, what, eight eleven? Eight twelve?